The absence of a minister here, I think we'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We'll wait for the pledge of allegiance to all these folks to get in here. Okay. If you would like to join us for the pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crowell?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Kowal?
Here.
Mr. McCrillis?
Here. Okay, tonight we have the privilege of swearing in the police officer. Let me all let you take that.
If you would just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend
I solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Neil. Thank you. Councilor John, Mayor of the Stoneville District. Sarah Jeffries.
Congratulations.
I guess I'm going to have you sign this real quick.
Okay.
Easy, huh?
Yeah. Takes 25 years, but this is easy.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Let's have some family members with you. Congratulations to your place officer, to you guys for this vote.
And that's how it's done.
Thank you to the officers who came here to support too. You guys are welcome to stay for the meeting, or if you have other things you need to do, we won't bore you to death with the rest of this, but it's exciting, it's exciting. Did you guys want to fisher anything with council?
Yeah.
Sure, can you make that up? Sorry, Chad. Pull call fair, I guess. Here we go. Let's get all the officers in there. Come on, you guys are part of this program. Everybody. Unless you don't want anybody to know who you are. Thank you guys for what you do. Right here, walls in. Might have to be a little closer.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that. Thanks again, congratulations. Yep. That's how it goes. Okay, at this time, we're going to appoint a new council person to our council. We put a notice out, and we had three people reply to that. We did interviews. And after everybody talking together, and it's basically an eight-month appointment, we have two names before us, and would somebody like to make a motion, who they'd like to see on the city council? Chad? Would you like to make a motion and maybe tell us a little bit?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
We had a new person on city council.
But who will it be?
Jay Corcoran.
Okay.
I'm a second to that one.
Okay. And I think I'll let Chad do the honors, since you probably know who better than any of us here. If you'd like to tell us a little bit about him.
Jay's been a lifelong member of Titusville, and he knows, he's been around the city for, you know, how old is Jay? Seventy now?
Oh my God.
Eighty.
Eighty? Well, at least fifty-some years, so. He's born and raised here, and, you know, I think he'd be a great fit to help, you know, he wants everything, nothing but best for the city, so he's a good fit for us on council.
Okay. All right, if there's not any other objections, then let's call the roll.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kowal?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. So then that means at this time, we'll do another swearing in, right?
Yes.
Jay, come forward, please.
If you would just raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend I do solemnly swear I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and the Constitution of this Commonwealth
and that I will discharge the duties
and I will discharge the duties
of my office with fidelity.
of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. What's that? He's from here, he's okay. We certainly thank everybody that put in for it. We had three people put in for it, and don't lose heart or give up. And we have lots of other things. What do we have that we need people on right now? Anything?
Everything.
Planning?
Planning. Zoning.
Zoning.
You don't have to worry, you'll be zoning.
Health, I think, Board of Health has a
Board of Health needs somebody, so please come forward for that.
And there's an election coming up.
And there's an election coming up. And there's an election coming up, May 18th is the primary, and I'm going to have to look at my calendar here. First Tuesday in November, after there is a Monday. First November is, looks like November 5th is election day this year. Thanks, Sarah. At this time, I have the privilege of doing a proclamation for library. This is National Literacy Week, so let's see if I can read this correctly. How about that? Whereas today's libraries are more about what they can do with and for their communities, and not just about what they have on the shelves. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions at the heart of their cities, towns, and countries, and whereas libraries serve people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds, providing the resources and space to engage in lifelong learning. Whereas libraries offer equipment and professional staff support to utilize technology programs and service fees free to users. And whereas libraries are a resource for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, or socioeconomic status. We recognize librarians as information professionals who provide expertise, service, and guidance for patrons to access credible sources of material, making their own informed decisions about the world today. Whereas libraries provide access to and display a wide range of information, not just a majority opinion or single perspective. Whereas librarians hold the professional values of diversity, equity, and inclusion to meet the needs of all users. Whereas America is celebrating National Library Week, including April 25th, as National Library Workers' Day. And the immeasurable contributions made by library workers, April 26th is the National Outreach Day, showing library services not limited to their physical location. And April 27th as Take Action Day for libraries, encouraging the community to support the library. And so now therefore, be it resolved that I, John Crouch, Mayor of the City of Titusville, proclaim April 23rd through the 29th, 2023 is National Library Week here in Titusville. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit our library and explore all that it has to offer and help move Pennsylvania forward. We proclaim this 17th day of April. All right?
Can I just make a quick comment?
Yes, please.
So libraries have been really hard hit lately with a lot of controversy and criticism and calls to remove materials and all kinds of things. So I just really want to, you know, give a shout out to our library and those that work there, the board, and the job that they do to, that they kept moving for the community and during COVID, and, you know, did whatever resources they could, and, you know, were back open to their regular hours at this point. And so I just want to give a shout out to all of them, since I know it has not been easy for public libraries in recent months.
They also had to be, yeah, become very, you know, they had to really think outside the box during all COVID thing with a lot of online stuff for everybody, so.
Correct.
Okay. This time we'll move into something a little more exciting. Approval of our previous meeting minutes. Everybody should receive this electronically. With that, would somebody like to make a motion to accept these previous meeting minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Kowal?
Yes.
Mr. Corcoran?
Yes.
Yes. At this time, we have approval of our operational reports. We'll start with, everybody except for Jay have received the building inspector report, finances, fire, police, public works, water, wastewater, treasures monthly report for March of 2023. Would anybody like to make a motion to accept these as presented?
Make a motion to be accepted.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Was there any clarifying questions that Neil can take back to any of these folks or about any of this? All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Kowal?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. At this time, we'll have manager report.
Mayor Manager. Yes, good evening, council. Just a few items this week on the manager report, some very brief. Just a quickly number one sewer line update down on the real creek. We had one across the eight-inch forest main that was put in. Happy to say they finished that project today without any issues. I think they started that project about two weeks ago with Mansfield Sanitation, who came in, did a fantastic job working with our wastewater folks as well. Scott Brown and his crew did a fantastic job working long hours on some days to be able to get this project done. D P was present, obviously, when they did the drilling and boring for the new line. So again, that sewer line is complete as of today. Some minor just cosmetic things are working on down there. But again, hats off to everyone involved as we quickly were able to solve that issue with a very old sewer line, seventy-five-plus-year-old line that was rupturing. And we did that replace and did a fantastic job. Next, just a quick update on Diamond Street Park. Most of you have seen, they put some hydro seed at the new park. They also put four new landscaping trees in as well. I did speak to Terry Works today to find out what was left officially on the park under waiting for the electric to be inspected. They're working with First Energy Pedal Lac to make sure that's done. They had to make some changes to the power box that was there that they didn't we code through pedal lacs, so they had to make some adjustments on that. My understanding is once that's done, they're going to come back, touch up the landscaping a little bit, and it'll be done. Fence will come down. Back today, I was at the stoplight, I actually saw some grass turning to come up. They just did that last week, so it's amazing how quickly grass can come up with what they did. So they did explain that when grass reaches seventy-five percent vegetation, that's when the fence will come down. So I assume that'll be real soon. Next, just a reminder to everyone, April 29th, we're going to have a community cleanup day. That's on a Saturday, that's April 29th. I think I had mentioned that we were meeting at Burgess Park, we're actually meeting at Shady Park.
Okay.
So I misspoke on that. Again, that's April 29th, and we have nine AM. So we're asking for volunteers. We'll be working with Take a Pride and other volunteers in the city to clean up Shady Park, clean sidewalks, rake, sweep, what have you. So we'll have the volunteers to come out and do this. Next, just a quick reminder, with the spring here in front of us, I want to talk a little bit about high grass. Folks, some of us, including myself, have already mowed the grass. Of course, here we are, snowed a little bit today. But we have an ordinance in place for grass that is above eight inches. It needs to be cut. I know our code enforcement office is very busy. The past three years, I know, Heather and I, when we were lacking a code enforcement officer, were very busy with taking high grass complaints. So just a reminder to everyone that you're on your grass, as it's very important, obviously. And obviously, I wanted to remind everyone about the garbage container, taking your garbage cans in. Councilwoman Jones brought up at one of our past meetings about people leaving their cans out on the edge of the street, sometimes getting knocked into the street. I know sometimes when Tri-counties picking up some of them, you end up on the street. But again, just a reminder to everyone, we have an ordinance in place about picking your containers after they get emptied by five o'clock that day, get them brought back into your residence. So just a reminder to everyone. And lastly, I have a special event approval for Tales on the Trails. You'll see about here from Benson Library, but this is, as I said, Tales on the Trails. Summer of 2022 and 2021, they basically had families and children get together at ages three and six, and they joined the Queen City Trail for a weekly storytime and nature walk. This is going to be on June 15th, starting at 11:15 AM. Additional dates will be on the website. Again, this is on the Queen City Trail, this is by Benson Memorial Library. So just so council's aware, approve this application, we have the appropriate insurance and appropriate paperwork to go with. Again, that's on June 15th at 11:15 AM on the Queen City Trail. I would recommend if anybody has any questions, check out the Benson Memorial Library website. Give us a call, we'll get in contact with the library if anybody has any questions. And with that, council, that concludes my report.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't know if this is the right place for this, but I just, when you talked about the park and everything over there, I had an opportunity to speak to one of the PR people from Taco Bell today, and they're hoping to have their place paved this week and maybe be open by next week, so.
Yes.
Anybody have any clarifying questions or wish to make a motion to accept the manager's report?
I don't have really a clarifying question, but is the Diamond Street Park, is that what we're going to be calling it?
No.
Are we working on that? So, I mean, now that it's almost finished, we probably shouldn't be deciding if that's going to be the name or not.
That's fine. We actually have been talking about that. And yes, we do need to come up with something by our meeting next month, really, because we'd like to do, once they take the fence down, we'd like to do formal ribbon cutting and stuff over there, really make a splash out of it. Not a splash, but you know. But you got a suggestion?
Do we ever get the results of the survey?
We could call it the Neil Diamond Park.
No. I know, I know, when the newspaper was here, I know Garrett had put a survey in the newspaper. I'm not sure where we were at on that.
I have all the names, but Garrett kind of dropped the ball on that one.
Okay.
So we can certainly review those ideas that we had, and council, I think, we can put something on our website or our Facebook page for a week, it's whatever council wishes.
I think it'd be nice to, you know, have something that really, yes, we have a lot of Colonel Ray and that type of stuff here, but it'd be something to where it would draw the focus, where it is like in Meadville, they call it the Diamond Street Park, right?
Right.
So we, you know, not Town Square Park, you know, Diamond Park, or something that draws attention to where it actually is. You know, the Shady Parkers don't need it by family, so I don't know. Does anybody else have thoughts on what it? Maybe send us the list and a little jogger member to talk about it. Thank you, Sarah. So a motion to accept it?
I'll make a motion to accept the manager's report.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, call the roll, please.
Mr. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Kowal?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Minutes and boards and authorities, we have minutes from the Housing Authority from March, and also the Airport Advisor Board meeting from March. Would someone like to make a motion to accept these?
Make a motion to be accepted.
I'll second that. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mr. Kowal?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. At this time, does anybody have any council committee updates? I know we have our second meeting on Monday, right, Neil, for the Dog Ordinance Committee?
Correct.
And by Monday, will the court hearings and all already be done?
Is one of them, I believe.
Is or will be done? Okay.
One of them, yes.
All right. All right. So we have some things we're working on there, place to put a dog, and we're definitely going to have to change the ordinance because it doesn't meet state requirements, so. Anybody else have any committee updates? I know we do need to figure out somebody for planning, if somebody wants to think about that. And we have to figure out a couple of things for Jay, you know, different committees. You just sit on them, that's all you do. You just go to a meeting once a month or once a quarter, whatever. You don't vote, you just are like a liaison for council. All right, at this time, we'll open it up for public participation pertaining to agenda items. Right now, five-minute time limit per individual speaker. Let us know whether you're from town or not and what your connection is. Tonight, under old business, we have nothing. Under new business, we have paving bid awards for liquid fuels, et cetera, and ARPA contracts. So would anybody like to speak on those before we move forward? Okay. New business, Neil, you want to introduce this paving to us?
Yes. So council should have, other than Jay, should have received in their packets the paving bid from five firms that came in. So we did, as I said, we received five bids last week for this year's paving projects. This year, the city received, and kind of just get a review quickly as I can here, received roughly $187,000 in liquid fuel money this year to be used for paving. City also is using $114,000 through CBPG Community Development Block Rate money for paving for two streets, and then $100,000 of ARPA funding that was specifically allocated for City Hall parking lot. Breaking this down, starting with liquid fuel and ARPA funding, we kind of split this into two different things. We had CBPG paving and then liquid fuel and ARPA paving. So with liquid fuel and ARPA money, the lowest bid was Pro-Tech Asphalt Maintenance Incorporated out of Newcastle, with a total, including all options, of $282,728.07. However, council, when you looked at the bidding sheets, my recommendation after reviewing all the costs is that we were over budget on option B, which was Waterworks. So Waterworks, we were looking at paving inside the fence to go to our Waterworks building. As council recalls, we budgeted $15,000 this year for paving at the Waterworks facility. Unfortunately, the bid came back at almost $18,000, so we were over. And when we look at it, it's about $2,700 over, but we've had some issues with the storm damage, and we've had to spend some money that we didn't allocate for water apartment, which was close to $11,000. So this project out of Waterworks, as far as an option, isn't a priority this year. Something that can wait till next year. Again, it's inside the fence, it's not coming in off of the main road. It's just something that we had put on there, hoping that we budgeted enough money, but unfortunately, the cost of things were just short. With that, as I said, with our tower one pump station going down from some storm damage, we had to spend some money. We just didn't plan on spending. I do ask council to award a bid to Pro-Tech Asphalt Maintenance Incorporated to do the core work, and just option A, which option A was Park Avenue up near Dillon Drive. So the one option, and then the core work itself, not the Waterworks. So I'm asking for the approval to them, it'll be the total of $264,000.
And does that
This would be the first.
Does that include that we're not talking about the city lot yet?
That includes the city lot, and then two, three, four, five streets.
Okay.
Yeah. So I'm asking for the approval of Pro-Tech Asphalt. Again, I've also contacted another municipality today. Today on Pro-Tech, as they're sort of new to the city, we haven't used them. If we did, it's been a little while, and nothing but praise for Pro-Tech. They've done a good job in St. Meadville, as they paved a lot of their streets last year.
Okay. So the motion can be to accept the paving bid award for Pro-Tech Asphalt?
Pro-Tech Asphalt Maintenance Incorporated.
Okay. Somebody like to meet to say those lightly?
I'll make a motion that we accept the bid for Pro-Tech Asphalt Maintenance Incorporated for the main bid and option A. Core work and option A.
So B, we're going to, hold on, okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mr. Kowal?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes.
Okay, secondly, the city had allocated $114,000, as I said, of Community Development Block Rate money to pave Brown Street and Murdoch Street. The lowest bid from Glenn O. Hawbaker Incorporated came in at $127,480.80. As council sees, we are over budget by $13,400. After reviewing the liquid fuel funding and getting approval, we have a balance left over from the liquid fuels of $5,957.10. When you break down the cost also on the paving of City Hall that we used ARPA, the actual total, we allocated $100,000.
Right.
The total, we came in at $84,000 for City Hall lot. So it was lower than what we budgeted for. That leaves us $16,000. Together with the liquid fuels, that leaves us $21,957.10 in the positive of the bid, with the money we had left over. We believe the cost of line painting, because we're going to need to put new lines in City Hall lot, will be under $10,000. So if you take that out as well, we're still going to be in the positive because we had some carryover of liquid fuel money. Now I know you may ask, well, why don't you use that money for the Waterworks?
I would.
The issue is the Waterworks paving is in a public street, so liquid fuels is ineligible to use for the Waterworks because it's inside the fence. So I recommend that we cover the difference of CBPG funding with the liquid, and the liquid fuel with the ARPA, and award the bid to Glenn O. Hawbaker Incorporated for the CBPG paving. Again, it's separate from CBPG because there's different guidelines that have to follow. It will be obviously for the minutes and for Community Development Block Rate money.
So not to confuse this more?
Sure, it is confusing.
But originally, that was in the bid, one of these bids over here is option B to do down at Waterworks.
So yes, the first, the first, the numbers I provided, that was an option, Park Avenue option and Waterworks. Park Avenue is a priority because it's a street. Waterworks was just kind of a, if we had gotten a great bid, we were going to get to pay.
So couldn't we use ARPA funds?
You certainly could use ARPA money. My hesitation was going to be, what is exactly the cost of the line painting?
Okay.
Putting in, I know that's going to be, cost money, obviously, but
But can it be done as a separate thing, or they want to do it while they're here?
Um, well, it would have to be done separately.
The Waterworks?
Yeah. Like, would they come back to town for that by itself?
They would probably want to do it while they're here.
Yeah. I mean, we could allocate ARPA towards it. Again, I'm just being cautious on the end of, it's not a priority.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
I think it can wait till next year.
Okay.
We had an unexpected cost of storm damage, I think it can wait.
Okay. So how would council like to proceed?
And I can just review, I'm just looking for an award to Glenn O. Hawbaker Incorporated for the paving of CBPG.
I'll make a motion to be accepted, award to Hawbaker.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Kowal?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Corcoran?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. That was it?
Thank you, yes. I know it was a little confusing, we had several pots of money going into different projects, and there was a, we always talk about trying to figure out how it works like a chess game, we're trying to figure out where money's going to come from, and thank you.
Okay. All right, at this time, we're going to open it up for public input. You have up to five minutes to speak, just let us know your name, and if you're a resident or non-resident, and if you're a non-resident, what your connection is to the town. or non-resident, and if you're a non-resident, what your connection is to the town.
Hi there, my name's Andrew Murray, I'm a resident of Titusville. What they don't want to talk about was Shitey, it's kind of Shitey Park, I believe.
Yes.
I don't know when the last time anyone's been up there lately, but it might have been when the windstorm happened, last, what, two weekends ago?
Yes.
A lot of the electrical cements have been, uh, possibly damaged, the covers that were supposed to be on them have been probably ripped off. Right now, I most likely assume they've been turned off by now at this point, probably over the winter, but most likely we should probably look at, have our, if they've smashed or there's some of those lines, which is something we don't, and also the water happening. Is that supposed to have a cover on it by any chance?
Where it?
Uh, in the front.
Shitey Park?
Yeah. Because right now, it looks like right now, the type of maintenance that's exposed for it, I don't know if it's supposed to be a panel or something on it, or not.
Like, is there a hose bid near the, near the gazebo, something for water flowers or something?
Yeah, it should be, yeah, as far as I know.
Is that what you're talking about?
Are you talking about the?
I'm talking about drinking water fountain.
Oh, okay, I thought you meant the, yeah, I was thinking of the other fountain, that's not, oh.
All right, so it's never been used for any ability at all? Like, I'm just, I'm just checking, because like, the water fountain itself, like, it looks like there's also like a panel that's supposed to cover it, like, keep the piping hidden, or something like that.
Okay.
That's it.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Coming to announce your bid for a ride interview?
No.
Okay.
Everybody, big evening, you guys know me, I'm Kelly McDonald, I am actually a resident of Pleasantville, but I'm connected with Drake will BMX, I am back. We did have to step away, my significant other and I, we had to step away, because there were some things that happened in our family. We lost three very prominent men in our family, all within a nine-month span, so it was a lot to lose, and we just kind of needed to focus on family, but typical with everything that you love and you have a passion for, I have stepped back in. The track needed some, some assistance with their treasury, because their treasurer had, was a gun nut, he was in other area and was having some issues, so we stepped back in and kind of are helping out again.
Okay.
So I wanted to just kind of update everybody, I happened to bump into Mayor Crouch and Neil on Monday, whenever we were at the street, and we were very pressed for time, but I wanted to update you guys on what's happening at the BMX track. So we are hoping to open the first week, the first week of May. Our first race is actually on the schedule for May fifth, that is a Friday night, we have switched our race days to Friday nights. The, to change a race day is kind of a huge process with USA BMX, because you can't keep up other tracks within a certain distance, and this stuff and the others, so the only eligible day we had was Friday nights, other than a weeknight. So, and technically, in USA BMX's terms, Friday night is a weeknight, but it's early weekend. So we switched to Friday nights at the end of the season, we saw our numbers slowly increase, so we're really hoping to increase ridership as the season goes on. I don't know if you guys have been down there, but in the fall, the track has been modified again. We brought in Trackmasters to do some work for us, they did the work two years ago, whenever we refigured the track. We redid the first straight, we redid the third straight, we added a few things on the fourth straight, we didn't have enough dirt to do it the last time, so this time, we had a little bit of extra money in the budget, so we put that into the track. We did that so that we can make the track a little bit more technical, hoping to bring other riders down here, and also to prepare our riders for whenever they go to other tracks. What was happening is that our track was super easy, people would go to other tracks, and they just really struggled to compete with other riders, so that was our goal, was to make that a little bit more technical, and hopefully bring some of those other riders in. We also are hoping to increase our numbers, if our, we really, really, really are hoping to snag some of these local kids. The mentality in the community is, why should I pay to race when I can ride for free any given day? Because our track is open to the public. And I'm here to tell you, and I think Mr. McCrillis would, would agree, having some history with the BMX track, that race day is very different than just kind of horsing around with your friends on the track. There's a different mentality, there's that, that level of competition, but there's also just a, a dynamic that I really can't describe, and that is that it's, it's been my fault during for our family to be in that, and it's all for the good, and it's created some really incredible friendships and connections with people all over the United States. So we are really, really hoping to get a lot of those kids that are local. I just copied everything for the Titusville schools, so that they will have that in their hands this week. Basically, what we're doing is, we're doing what we're calling a beginner boot camp, a lot of kids don't know where to start, so we're starting a beginner program. It is eighty dollars, it is six weeks of coaching, we're going to teach everybody what they need to know, so that whenever they show up at race day, they know what they're doing, and they're not intimidated by the other riders that are on the hill with them. So the sign up is Saturday at the track from ten to twelve. It is also the need coaches, and we're looking at one of them. So it is myself, Brock Craig, Zach Holder, he is a, he races as well, and then we're also going to pull some of our member folks in, so that they have some people that are closer to their age, that will be able to help out and give out some direction. With that, they're going to get a T-shirt and a number plate, and if they decide that BMX is their sport, Drake will BMX is picking up half of their annual membership fee. So we're really hoping that by saying, hey, we're willing to invest in you, that you'll stick around and invest in us as well. We are also hoping, now that the weather has changed, we were really hoping to have our track work done this weekend and next weekend. We put in very, very long days, I don't know if everybody understands what we do, but we put in almost a sixteen-hour day, sometimes longer than that. I joke about it, that it's the day of my life, the day of the year that I can't stand, but I'm so grateful when it's done, because we have to do everything all at once. We break, we drag, we roll, we glue. And so, and a gluing that provides that nice surface that the entire community can continue to use even after it's been wet. We were very fortunate that we had glued down whenever we had all of those torrential rains a few years ago. The funny thing was, the track was solid, though everything around it wasn't much, and so we were very fortunate that we finally figured out the glue situation, we have lifted our glue from last year, so we don't have any money out of budget for that. So we're also asking that if anybody has any time, any, an hour or two, please stop down, because the more people that we have doing a little bit of work, it goes by so quicker, and I won't be so crappy at the end of the night. But we have a good system going, but we just need some hands to really get that track crafted and ready to go. Everybody in the community, the kids all love to use that through the summer, and so we're really, really grateful that we're able to provide that for the community, and so, if anybody has any time, if anybody needs service hours or any like expectations or anything like that, we are a nonprofit, we make the decision and we jump through all those hoops, so we have that, and I can sign off on that for anybody who does need that taken care of. Last but not least, I want to tell you guys about our really, really amazing girl, and a, and a very, once in a lifetime opportunity that she's been presented with, that, I talked with Neil about this, and I said it would be a small miracle if I could get her here. She is extremely humble, and she is not about tuning her own horn, so here I am, doing it for her. Her name is Katie Brink, and she is a rider out of Erie, but I call her a local girl, because she comes down and she races with us. She's also on my race team, so she's, she's mine. And I'm, and I'm really, really proud of her. She's been racing since she was four, took a hiatus and played some basketball, and then came back a few years ago, and within weeks, she picked up right where she left off. I got to know Katie because she was the same age as my daughter, and she and my, and Katie and my son, they hung out and did a lot of work together, but Katie went down to Florida on her spring break, she packed her bike, a friend took it down, she was going down to visit some friends and decided, hey, I'm going to race the national for fun, and she did. And that Friday was a UCI, United, or is it United, I can't remember what that stands for, the UCI Worlds qualifier, and she qualified. Not only did she qualify, but she took second place in that, in that race.
For fun. For fun.
For fun, exactly, exactly, for fun, she did that, I said, I can't do that, I can't, I don't, I can't handle that pressure. But, so she went down there for fun, and she did, she took second place that night, and got her spot to qualify for the world championship in Scotland. That is at the end of July. And the rest of the weekend, she raced the other two nationals, and she took second place both days. For somebody to go down to Florida and be able to race, those guys are racing all year long, and for her, as a girl who's from up north, to be able to go down there and flatter and compete, but place on the podium, is incredible. Katie's going to go to Glasgow, Scotland for, for Worlds. Drake will BMX is supporting her, along with our race team, along with the entire BMX community, and I just basically want to tell you that she's the whole package. She's the girl that you absolutely want to present a team USA. Katie's a 4.0 student at Canyon University. Katie is a Christian, Katie is a helper, frequently you can find her behind the scenes, either taking pictures of her friends at BMX, or she's coaching other kids. She's actually coaching a clinic, along with a couple other, a couple other riders coming to Pittsburgh in a couple weeks. Basically, Katie would never say this about her, but I really firmly believe that this is the girl that you want. Like I said, she went down for fun, she had nothing to lose, and I think that's part of what makes her so attractive to support, is that she is just about going as far as she, she wants. So I'm here to say that if anybody wants to help, she needs help. To get her and a support person over to Scotland is going to cost twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
She is currently between her GoFundMe and the ticket fundraiser that we're doing, we will have her at about seven thousand dollars. When we sell off all of these tickets, we, Drake will BMX will be able to give her three thousand dollars towards her trip. So there are about sixty tickets left, there are some down at the chamber, they can get those through me, you can buy them directly through the Facebook page, so if anybody has any interest, or if anybody would like to contact us about potentially directly helping her, we are here willing to make that happen. So, other than that, we're moving and grooving down there, and we're really hoping that we can get some new faces down there, so that that grows a little bit more, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, though, what's the day that you're planning on doing all your, all your work?
Tentatively scheduled for that Saturday, the twenty-ninth.
Same, so, we could just leave Shitey Park, go down there?
So.
Okay.
Like I said, any help that we can get, just helps to make things move quicker, like I said, that sixteen-hour day, if it goes down to fourteen, that'd be better.
What time do you start?
Uh, we're probably getting down there, at least, it'll be five o'clock.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll start with our closing comments by junior council, Aiden?
I'd just like to say congratulations to Maxwell, who was here earlier, being sworn in, as our newest police officer, and also congratulations to Mr. Courtland, on being sworn in, and welcome to council.
Thank you. Okay, so we just kind of go around the mark tonight, and we'll start with Bill for council.
I'd just like to say congratulations to the new officer, welcome him aboard, Jay, welcome you aboard for a short period of time, you'll enjoy it.
Thank you.
Also, I'd like to thank the other, who was that, the other guy? His name?
Maxwell, the other officer?
No, the other man was, of which I was Jay.
Oh, Andrew.
Oh, Andrew's.
Yep.
Thank you for putting your name in, and coming, and going through the process, we really appreciate that. I, I'm sorry, but I, I see you there every week, but I'm not good on names, so, thanks again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Neil, thank you for what you do, Heather, thank you for what you do, and everybody in the city of Titusville, don't forget about voting in May, please get out there, we've got seats to fill, come and join, join these, I won't say handsome people, but there's good-looking people, how about that? Sarah, right?
Sarah.
She's not handsome, she's good-looking, so, okay. So anyhow, thank you all, and that's it for me.
Okay, Chad?
I'd just like to welcome Jay aboard, it's going to be an interesting eight months working with you, should be fun, so, that's all.
Thank you.
Jay?
No, just, guess I'm just here to learn the, learn the ropes, I guess, which right now, kind of clueless on a lot of this stuff, and so, I guess you'll have to patient with me, hopefully, I guess, and as I go through reading all this stuff, and, yeah, see how things go.
Very good. Deputy?
Other than to reiterate what everybody else said, welcome, welcome Jay, and congratulations to the new police officer, and I don't really have much else tonight.
Okay. I would just like to say that, again, congratulations to Max, the new officer, and, you know, congratulations to upcoming here, Tim Russell and Lynn Chicorelli, both retired, had a lot of time on forces, gosh, it's got to be close to fifty years of service between the two of them, and that's amazing, we have a good police force. Thanks, Neil, for, and our public works, and our waterworks, and our sewer plant, for all the work they did coordinating all this stuff to get this done, and for the company for getting done in such a quick manner. I would just like, out of curiosity, maybe over the next couple of months, if he could keep us up to date on what kind of usage it's saving us from all the water that was coming in, you know, overloading our sewer plant. I would like to say, welcome Jay to council, thanks to the rest of council for, you know, putting up with all this extra time at, when things come up, and even like through this